I'd like to call to order the City of Riverbank Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, August 18, 2015. Call to order?
Chair Hughes.
Here.
Commissioner McKenney.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
And Commissioner Vilebodwa.
Here.
Conflict of interest: any planning commission, authority member and staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered are to declare their conflict. Are there any conflicts? Okay, moving forward to number one, public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please address the entire Planning Commission Board. Moving on to number two, the consent calendar. Oh, we have a public comment. Hi.
Good evening. Richard O'Brien, Riverbank. Personally, I want to thank you all for what you are doing. I know it is difficult for the research that you have to do, the time you take out of your lives to prepare for the Planning Commission, and it seems like it's a thankless job, but I'm here to thank you. I really appreciate all what you're doing. A couple of things coming on up I would like you to consider with the City Council. First off, setting goals and objectives for each year. The City Council meets twice a year, and I implore you to join the City Council at least once a year. This next March timeframe, we'll be setting the new three-year goals that we are wanting to achieve with objectives. The Commission and the Council needs to be meeting a little bit more often than we do, and I'm going to invite you to the City Council in February to have a joint Planning Commission-Council meeting to start looking at our objectives for that year and how we are going to achieve them, and any ideas that we may have as we go into our next planning cycle. Third, I'd like to -- you're doing a great job, and I know some of your commissions are expiring and some of them just left, that we need to make sure that if you are planning on remaining, make sure that I get your applications sooner than later, because the decisions I would like to have made prior to the new year. I know, boy, it's four months from now, and four months are going to go awfully fast. And again, I want to reiterate the difficult decisions that you are making. They are having long-term effect in the Riverbank. You may see some immediate goals, but some of them are long-term, long after I'm gone, and I'm not planning going for a long time. I'd like you to consider being objective in what you are -- the decisions that you are making, considering what the businesses have planned and how that's going to affect the City of Riverbank. Some of the businesses may not be something that you would like to have, but if the business is going and is providing the service and -- what I'm trying to say is don't try to take personal responsibilities away from individuals when they have to make a decision. I know you have some difficult ones coming on up and in the past. And if you have individuals on that you think would be a good commissioner, please encourage them to apply. I know I'm not supposed to address the public. I'm only to you, so if you would address to the public behind me and anybody else who are interested in a commission, please apply through the city clerk. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'd like to address the audience and to the public that we do have some vacancies in the Planning Commission. We just recently had our vice chair step down, John DeGale, and we would encourage those of you that are interested in becoming a public official, helping to benefit the constituents in our jurisdiction, or if you have a friend or family member that you think would be interested, please apply through the City of Riverbank. Okay? Are there any questions regarding that? Okay, thank you very much. So we're going to move on then and close the public comments and go to number two, the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission unless otherwise requested by an individual Planning Commissioner member for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by row, call, vote. Item 2.1, posting of the agenda; item 2.2, approval of the agenda; item 2.3, approval of the minutes. May I have a motion, please?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Chair Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner McKenney.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Vilebodwa.
Yes.
Moving forward, I'd like to move to item 3.1, Horizon's Unlimited Healthcare Architecture and Site Plan Review 01-2015, and I'll have Donna go over the project description, please.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
And Chair. This is Architectural and Site Plan Review 01-2015, Horizon's Unlimited Healthcare, 3234 Santa Fe Street, APN 132-011-017. This is a request for an architectural and site plan review proposing a tenant improvement for a medical clinic use with upgrades to the facade and the creation of an outdoor staff break area on the adjacent existing pavement. The proposed architecture and site plan review is subject to approval by the Planning Commission pursuant to Section 153.095-G of the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances. Let me go ahead and get this started. As I mentioned, the project consists of the following: an architectural and site plan review for a medical clinic use with upgrades to the facade and the creation of an outdoor staff break area. The site, here is City Hall where we are right now, so across the street, and this building and courtyard right here is the location, right next to City Hall South. All of this is contained on one parcel. This is the existing building of 4182 square feet, and then this is the existing courtyard. The applicants are proposing a couple of six-by-six boxes with trees and landscape -- excuse me, irrigation, a six-foot decorative wrought iron fence that will be set back a few feet from the front of the building, and have landscape boxes with plants and irrigation just this side of the gate. They also propose a bike rack here. The front door of the facility is right here, right around the corner from the bike rack. The sidewalk, public sidewalk, is here with on-street parking. The trash is proposed to be kept in this building over here and will be accessed through the alley. They do propose an upgrade to the facade, but not so much, you know, brick-and-mortar work, but it has a nice facade already from the 1930s. They propose changing the colors to this light gray or cream color and red. There's existing boards right here and here right now that will be removed, so you can see the brick and that will be painted. Off the side, you can see, this is just a representation of the fence. It will be a decorative fence. As a condition of approval, the planning department will approve that decorative fence before it is installed. Here's a preliminary floor plan. When you come in the front door, you would have the waiting area. These are all the examination rooms, some offices, break areas, and the staff room. And there will be an opening to the courtyard, which staff will have access to for their The municipal code requires the Planning Commission to find the project consistent with the city's general plan. Policy Design 10.1, the city will require site and building access for pedestrians and bicyclists by providing the most direct pedestrian access from the sidewalks and parking areas to building entrances while minimizing conflicts with motor vehicle traffic. The building entrance opens directly onto city sidewalk with street parking directly beyond that. The applicant is installing a decorative bicycle rack adjacent to the building and wrought iron fence. Policy Design 10.8, the city will require ground-floor building facade treatments and activities that generate pedestrian interest and comfort. Large windows, canopies, arcades, plazas, and outdoor seating are examples of such amenities. The building facade, which was constructed in 1935, is 50 percent glass with the northern exposure. The clinic waiting room will be the first room that clients enter when they arrive, and it should, from the natural light, be bright and cheerful. A city bench is available on the sidewalk for clients, and the landscape-enhanced courtyard will be available to clinic staff. Policy Design 10.11, the city will require incorporation of architectural and landscape features that allow for secure locking of bikes in locations easily observed from indoors. The project does include a bike rack in an accessible location within 10 feet of the building's front windows. As part of the conditions of approval, besides our standard conditions of approval, planning staff will review and approve the wrought iron fence design, the design of the bicycle rack, and the plant and tree palette before installation. Also, I want to take a moment to discuss parking. The downtown-specific plan addresses parking based on use, and according to the business that was in there before, which was a hair salon, that use required 14 parking spaces. Obviously, they weren't provided on-site. I do know that the city does allow street parking to count toward that, but the way that the specific plan addresses a new use is that you take the two uses and decide if whether or not there is a deficit. So the salon was required to have 14 parking spaces, and the clinic use, based on the number of employees and number of examination rooms, was required to have 18 parking spaces. So that is a deficit of four spaces from the previous use. The specific plan also states that these deficit parking spaces can be provided by the applicant through payment of a one-time parking and loofah fee, which money would go into a specific account toward another parking -- toward a parking facility or something that would accommodate parking downtown. At this point in time, the council has not yet adopted a parking and loofah fee, but I did speak to the city attorney, and we determined that we could do kind of a placeholder condition of approval, which is pay an in-loofah fee for parking spaces after council adopts the fee. So there, you know, will be a public hearing when that fee is adopted. Horizon's healthcare can come to that and, you know, discuss with the council what they feel should be appropriate. I have, from my own personal experience, I have seen some cities charge $1,000 a parking space. I've also seen them charge $10,000 a parking space. In these tough times, I do also know of a city that has stepped back from the fee that is on their books and decided to take each business on a case-by-case basis as long as the economy, you know, was kind of tanked out. And then they actually had allowed people to pay off their parking spaces over a couple of years at 7 percent interest, but then they also dropped down to say, not only, you know, don't we want to charge them that fee right now, we want to look at each as a case-by-case and have a lower interest rate to help these folks out. So when we do bring this to the council, we will give them the wide range of our research that we found out there, and hopefully they'll come up with a fee that's adequate both for, you know, putting towards a new parking facility, but also something that will encourage the businesses to locate and thrive downtown as well.
And when would you expect that this would go, before the City Council?
It'll be a couple of months yet, because there'll be public noticing, and there'll be some research and things that we have to do. I'm going to be talking with the city attorney this week and putting together a schedule, and I can let you folks know as soon as I have that schedule.
And do you have a plan B in case it doesn't pass through the City Council?
I do not. It's the downtown-specific plan that calls for that fee. If they decided not to move forward with a fee, then I suppose staff would look at amending the downtown-specific plan to have that requirement removed or changed. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, this is an infill site. There is no impacts that can be seen as far as, well, it meets the criteria that the site is no more than five acres in size, surrounded by substantial urban uses. The site has no value as habitat for endangered, rare, or threatened species since the ground was originally disturbed in the 1930s and has been covered since, and there would be no significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air, or water quality, and the site can be served by all utilities. That's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer some questions, and I believe the applicant has some people here as well. Thank you.
Any questions for Donna?
No, I'm kind of want to hear from the public as well.
Okay. Well, we'd like to open the public meeting at this point, and if there's anybody that would like to speak to this item, please come forward. Item 3.1. Could you state your name and your address and of residence, please?
My address of -- William Wareham with M&amp;W Construction Incorporated. I'm the one doing the TI improvement on the building. We had discussed about the parking issues prior, that we would designate all of our employees or the employees of Horizon to park across the way where you have a parking site now. That way, there wouldn't be any conflict with the parking prior to the building in front. You know, we're just trying to bring a new establishment, you know? If there's any questions, you know, I kind of got a little bit late. Sorry about that. My apologies. I'm coming from Merced, by the way. If there's anything that I can do to improve or any questions, I have an email, or I can give you some cards, and you can definitely get ahold of me, contact me in any way, and I'll answer any questions. If I don't have, can't answer them now, I can get the research and answer them for you. We have looked into that. That was before Donna took over. There was another person that was, we were dealing with, and then now that she's taken over, we've got to a point of stop to where going through to proceed on.
You mentioned this parking, is it the one across the way?
Adjacent, yes, adjacent to the hall there. Yeah, that's what we had discussed prior, you know, that we would designate all employees, everybody that is involved in the clinic would park there, you know, and then we'd have just our entry in the back for deliveries, and that would be it.
Is that what was designated to the previous owners, that parking spot over there? Or was it the 14 that were to the hair salon or the others?
Wareham.
I'm not sure that the 14 that were allotted to the salon were actually, like, marked out.
Or designated.
Designated, yes.
Any questions for this gentleman, for William?
What type of clinic is this?
Medical, not emergency medical, you know, a rural clinic, basically. They would be able to answer that a little bit better, their representatives.
My name is Brian. Brian Blue, I'm with Horizon's Unlimited. My residence is Mariposa, California. Horizon's is very happy and excited to come to your community. We're a rural health clinic. We have an urgent care system. We do medical. When we first opened, we'll just be doing medical, but we would like to move into doing dental, and we really try to move forward with reaching the communities that's not, that are underserved and underprivileged, and bring, you know, medical services to them.
So this is like all-inclusive medical care?
Well, that's an inter -- you know, all-inclusive is a big term. We have family practice. We have acupuncture chiropractic. We do different kinds of services. Anything like major x-rays or anything like that, they would have to go to a different facility. We don't have that kind of treatment there. It's just mainly a rural health clinic. We can do most things. You know, we may have to transfer people to one of our other clinics if they need, you know, major cardiac, you know, stuff. It's just rural health clinic and medical. It's like going to the doctor's office, basically.
Kind of like an urgent care?
Urgent care, yeah.
But it's not 24 hours, is it?
No, not 24 hours. We open from 8:30 to 5:00. And, you know, as we've, when we started in a clinic, we usually don't do any pre-marketing. We open the clinic, and then we market it, you know, as we go. So the first day, we may have three, four people show up. We just opened a clinic in Patterson. They're seeing about 10 people a day, maybe 15, you know? It's very slow, you know, to get started and move forward, and we bring in the specialties like the acupuncture and the chiropractor and the dental as the clinic builds, but we try not to, like, overwhelm a community by opening up and having, you know, a mass, you know, bunch of people coming in, so.
So is this primarily for people who do not have health insurance?
We take all health insurance. We, as a rural health, this clinic will be a rural health clinic. It's not an FQHC, which is a federally qualified healthcare center, but when it does, we'd actually have a sliding fee scale. So we take basically anybody, but mostly people, most insurances. We take most insurances except for HMOs.
So you have another facility?
Oh, yes, sir. We have, we have, we're in four different counties. This will be our eighth clinic. We have clinics in Mariposa, Chowchilla, Livingston, Los Banos, Gustine. We're going to be opening one, hopefully, in Newman, and we have just opened one in Patterson.
In the rural areas?
Yeah, we're a rural health clinic. It's a really underserved population. You know, if you go into the cities, you have a lot of doctors and a lot of facilities to go from, but out in the rural areas, a lot of times, there's people that just can't get to the doctor or don't have the means and ways to get into the city. So it's, and it's underserved, and that's what we really try to do. Any other questions?
Thank you.
We're very excited to come here. I love your community, so thank you.
Chair, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item 3.1? Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing, then Commissioners.
I have no questions. It's pretty straightforward.
Any questions? Then, can we hear a motion then on item 3.1?
Move for approval of Resolution Number 2015-19, adoption of an architectural site plan review for Horizon Unlimited Healthcare.
I second it.
Chair Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenney?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vilebodwa?
Yes.
And the verbiage, as we discussed, with regard to the conditional, or the pending parking spaces, that will be also included?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
It is, it is in the resolution.
Very good. Okay, moving over then to item 3.2. Monoroso Vesting Tentative Map Application 02-2015, and I'll leave the project description to Donna.
Okay. First, I would like to mention that staff is embarrassed to say that we sent out the final draft of the staff report and resolution instead of the final, so there were some minor changes. I did leave each one of you a new resolution, and so as we go through this presentation, I will bring up that information that's new in there.
Okay, very good.
Let's see, how do we get to the next one? Oh, it's already on, just wake up.
Okay. This is Vesting Tentative Map Application 02-2015. It's a request for the development of 10 single-family lots on a combined 2.21 acres, consisting of nine vacant lots and one lot with an existing single-family residence, 3949 California Ave. Property is located at the northwest corner of California and Claus, APN 132-046-078 and 079. It is zoned R1 Single Family Residential. The general plan designation for the site is LDR, Low Density Residential. Okay, so as I mentioned, that is a combined 2.21 acres, so APN that ends in 078 is just a little over a half an acre, and APN-079 is a little over one and a half acres. As it's lauded out, Lot 5 would contain the existing house and garage, and Lots 1 through 4 and 6 through 10 would be vacant. There are no proposed plans right now for any houses on those lots. This is the project location, the aerial view. That is the house that will remain. This is the Vesting Tentative Map. We have lots 1 through 5 on this side. They will front Matthew Lane. Then we have 6 through 10, and they will front Claus Road. The Riverbank Municipal Code requires that the Planning Commission find the project consistent with the city's general plan. So Policy Design 1.6, and this is the section that was omitted from the, yes, thank you, the resolution. I had generally talked about the project being consistent with the general plan as far as, the general plan for low-density residential is one to eight houses per acre, and this works out to 4.5. So it does, is consistent with the general plan designation. Then I added these policies in to kind of reaffirm that, and this, these two, this policy and the next one is what was left out of the resolution, which is now in there. So Policy Design 1.6, approved projects, plans, and subdivision requests shall connect with adjacent roadways and stubbed roads and shall provide frequent stubbed roadways in coordination with future planned development areas. So this project proposes a new Matthew Lane, and it connects the stubbed Matthew Lane to the north with California Avenue to the south. Therefore, the project is consistent with this general plan policy. Policy Design 2.7, in general, the city will require the construction of sidewalks on both sides of new streets. The city requires all frontage improvements on proposed Matthew Lane, including curb, gutter, and sidewalks. Therefore, the project is consistent with the general plan policy. I would like to note, though, that I provided the applicants with the staff report and the conditions ahead of time and looking for some feedback and to make sure that all the facts were correct. And the applicant does have some issues. He may speak to you tonight about the curb, gutter, and sidewalks being on both sides. Environmentally, this does meet the California Environmental Quality Act, Section 153. Environmentally, this does meet the California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15332. The vesting tentative map is consistent with its general plan and zoning designations. It is a site of no more than five acres in size, surrounded by substantial urban uses. The site has no value as habitat for endangered, rare, or threatened species. There would be no significant effects related to traffic, noise, air, or water quality, and the site can be served by all utilities. I do have a couple more comments to make. There was some concern by staff about the traffic on Claus and the 6 through 10 that do front Claus. So staff has required that those homes have a shared T-shaped driveway. That way, people can pull in and turn around and come out of their driveways forward into traffic on Claus. Okay. The second was that, I did circulate this to staff for comments, and we did get two comments back. One from the finance department that was very supportive of the project and the revenues and the amenities that it will bring to the city. And the second was the Riverbank Police Services, that Chief Kylie would like to make sure that as its development moves forward, that they do share in the cost of providing police services for that area. And so as part of the new community facilities district that the city is moving forward with, they will be required to enter into that district. And there will be a yearly fee placed upon those lots to provide for those police services. But it's, it's not, you know, kind of an arbitrary one. As we go forward through the CFD process, there will be public hearings, the property owner. I expect this will go through while there is still one owner of the lots, because each owner of a lot is allowed to vote whether or not they want to move into the district. So normally, a city will hold a vote when there's only one or two property owners, which makes the vote a lot easier. And I believe that's all the information I have for you now. I did bring up the T-driveways, the frontage improvements on Matthew, and then the police department request. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you. Put that map back up for you.
You touched on that, the T-driveway?
Yes.
How is that, so it'd be on the Claus side, correct?
Yes.
On the parcels 6 through 10?
Yes. Well, actually, 10 is a little bit different. I should have brought that up, too. So for these, okay, so for these lots here, these would-
Nine?
Yeah, this is 6 and 7. They would share a T-shaped driveway. 8 and 9 would share a T-shaped driveway. And then 10, we're requiring to have a driveway over here on California as far from the corner as possible. So there would actually be, these four lots would share two T-driveways.
Based on the traffic on Claus?
Correct, correct. We don't expect near that amount of traffic on Matthew, and so these shouldn't be a problem to have regular driveways there. There is, I think you've noticed, a part of the drainage from these lots will be going into that drainage basin. And then these lots, the applicant is planning on utilizing existing Claus Road.
There's a homeowner on this already, correct? On that parcel, on parcel 5, Lot 5?
Correct.
Is this the applicant that's presenting, no?
It's a rented house.
It's a rental, okay. It's a rental.
The rental has fenced in backyard right now, and that will be reduced to, all their facilities or amenities will be on this parcel right here, 10, and it is the largest parcel there.
I have no further questions.
Matthew Lane just exists on paper right now, right?
This Matthew Lane, the new, this proposed is on paper. This one is actually existing.
And the drainage basin, is that also going to double as a little neighborhood park?
I believe it'll be too small for that. It should have some landscaping. Maybe you'll be able to walk down there with your dog, but no, I don't think any picnic tables, nothing, it's not large enough for anything like that. Yeah. And as a reminder, when someone does come forward, either this applicant or the next one decides that they do want to build, it will come before you for architectural and site plan review.
So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone to speak to this, this item?
Hello, my name is Pete Perkins. I live at 3901 California Avenue in Riverbank. And on the picture that you showed of the house, there are three houses. There's a house where you can see the swimming pool, there's that house, there's another house.
To the left there?
See where the swimming pool is there?
Yeah.
We can't see my picture, mine, there's one house there, and then there's two other houses. I live at 3901, there's 3909 California Avenue, which are off the picture there. Anyway, last summer, I was out in my front yard, and I saw some people come by, two different, two different groups. One of them were coming by and were, I talked to them and asked them what they were doing, and they told me they were out there checking into the sewer, because I've known for years, we've been there for more than 25 years. And what you're looking at right there has no sewer improvements on California Avenue. And I don't know if my information is old, but that was supposed to be, I was told, a main sewer trunk for the whole east side of California Avenue. So currently, I'm not hooked up to, through California Avenue to the city sewer, nor are the other two houses, nor is the house that you're seeing there. Of course, they're part of this improvement. But my question is in this, since my neighbors to the, toward the Little League Park also, they're on septic, and they haven't been required to hook up to the sewer, would we be required to hook up to this sewer? And who would pay for that cost? Unless my information is faulty. And then I actually saw a gentleman out there who was doing not your typical surveying, but he had some type of a poll, and I asked him what he was doing, and he says, "I'm taking measurements of everything that's out here." So that's my biggest concern. And so this, this doesn't, this tentative map doesn't address any actual construction or house sizes. My concern would be, is there an income level that these are directed towards with that? So that's my second question and concern. I'm guessing if there's someone here from, that you could probably address those?
I can draw some of the questions, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Rick Denofrio. I'm with Hawkinson Associates. We are the civil engineers for the project. I don't see Dan Monteroso here, so I'm going to speak as best I can for him. Let me first answer this gentleman's question about the sewer. The way this project is going to sewer is, there's an existing sewer main. I believe it's an 18-inch pipe located in California Avenue, and it's roughly about 600 feet west of this property, plus or minus. I might be off a little bit. So in order for this project to actually go to build, the owner will have to extend that sewer out California to Claus. And then you'll see on that tentative map, we're actually proposing what we call a flagline for the sewer going up Claus Avenue. Rather than, rather than having those lots tie into the main line in Claus, we're proposing a, oh, you can point, we're proposing a flagline sewer. So the bottom line is, this developer would have to build that sewer. And the owners, one of the owner's questions is to the city is how is he's going to get reimbursed and how the reimbursements are going to be calculated? Is it by house, by square footage, you know? It's my understanding that one of the consultants for the city, engineering firm, I believe, Bill Cole's company is doing a engineering study on that sewer design. And so I think that answers that question. If you've got any questions about that, let me know. So, so the owner would have to build the sewer unless the city gets in there and builds a sewer first, which I don't think is going to happen, you know? I think the developer will obviously beat the city's needs there. So it would be some kind of agreement between the owner and the, and the city to build the sewer.
So how does that affect us current residents?
Well, that I don't know. That's a city policy question. I don't know if they would require the residents who are on, current residents who are on septic tanks to make the connection or not. I'm not sure. The city engineer would have to answer that question, I believe. Yeah, I don't have that information. My apology.
I can't speak to whether or not they would be required to sign up, but I do know that the city council is interested in having that sewer line built, because it will help with growth on the other side of Claus.
Right.
And the city council did direct Bill Cole to do the engineering for that. And, excuse me, and my understanding is he is all, over 50% done with his engineering right now. And that the city is meeting with possible developers for properties on the other side of Claus, and they would be required to, well, Mr. Monteroso would probably be required to upsize a little bit for the pipes to accommodate those larger projects, and then they would reimburse him. The details still have to be worked out with the city yet. They'll be part of like development agreement negotiations and improvement plans. But at this time, I do know that the engineering for that sewer line is over 50% complete.
So I have a question for you with regard to this gentleman's concerns. So oftentimes, if there's any other development on your property, you may be required then to hook up with the, with the city sewer, is that correct?
Or if a sewer goes out.
Or if this, or if your septic goes out. So those are, those are questions that, that you could speak to the city about.
Sometimes, different agencies do it different ways, but many times, sometimes, when a, when a municipality builds a sewer main, they sometimes can require, or sometimes they do require, that anybody's on septic to hook up to it. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that has to happen on this project. I've seen it both ways, so. And then typically, though, on any new development, though, it is a requirement to connect to the, to the main.
For the new development, yes.
For new development, right.
For the new development, but-
Existing residential, existing condition is sometimes 50/50 each way. I mean, it's up to the homeowner or the city demands it. It's, it's their call typically.
The other was that he mentioned also on the income level. What do you guys, uh?
I'm not the, I'm not the owner. I don't know. These are pretty big lots.
Yeah.
And I got, I would have to believe that they're going to be a pretty nice sizable house. I don't, again, I'm not the owner or the developer, so I'm not sure what the income ranges they're looking at, you know? I just know that it's a, it's a nice area, you know, it's right across from the school. It's beautiful lots when they get done. I would like to speak about the lot, the T-drives on Claus. To the north on Claus, on the west side, just north of us, is existing residential, and they have currently driveways that back onto, or access onto Claus Avenue. So hence, we thought it'd just be a continuation of four more lots of that scenario, but we're going to have a T-driveway where, as Donna explained, the resident won't have to back out onto it. And then the other item that was discussed that's in your staff report is currently on the west side of Matthew, where Matthew is existing, there's curb gutter and sidewalk on both sides of the street. And it's a, it's a 40-foot curb-to-curb street section, I believe. We will match that, but currently, we're not, we're proposing sidewalk on the west side. And also that the, the travel lane or the street width reduces down to just the travel lane width of 12 feet, eliminating the eight-foot parking. So it would be kind of a 3/4 section, and the reason for that is there are no residents on that side, so we didn't feel that there was a necessity for parking on the west side of Matthew. If the city would like to have the sidewalk in there, we have the capability to take the bottom end of our proposed Matthew alignment, and we can move it east to accommodate another two or three feet to get a sidewalk, full sidewalk width in there, so you'd have continuity all the way down along the west side of Matthew, down to California, if that's what the city would prefer. Speaking for the developer, though, he would prefer to not have it, so. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here to speak to item 3.2?
Just an additional comment on Matthew Lane. Have any of you been to that existing section of Matthew Lane? It's low-income, it's duplexes. Many years ago, I worked Riverbank Police Department and for Estana-Slos County Sheriff's Department when Riverbank had a police department, and I was a community service officer. That is a higher area of crime typically, it has been. My information's 15, 20 years old, but still, that's a concern I have, that you're opening that up to the rest of California Avenue, and I just hope the houses are going to attract people with higher income. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment I'd like to make. I, I did search through the city's code during this discussion, and I didn't see anything about the city requiring connection fees. So in the event that neighboring properties opted into connecting to the sewer or the system failed, that's when a connection fee would kick in. And as, as Donna mentioned, there might also be some oversizing required based on the engineering analysis. And if the sewer line is designed to be oversized, then new development would also be, you know, maybe required to contribute to their proportion of the oversized sewer. But that is all contingent on a new development.
Thank you. Any other questions?
What about lighting on that area?
We would propose the city standard street lighting at the appropriate spacing on all the streets, all three streets. I'm not sure what the city requirements are for street lighting, but we would certainly meet the recommendations and requirements for the, for the street lighting.
Type of landscape? Are you into that part of it?
No, not really. I, I couldn't really speak to that too much.
The landscape plans and irrigation plans would be part of a condition of approval for the architecture and site plan review of the homes. So we're not quite to that point yet.
Yeah, and I would like to add just one item. Matthew Lane currently is a dead-end street coming south. It goes north, I don't know, at least several hundred feet, I think, and then does a knuckle. Making this connection will allow emergency services to have a better circulation path, both for police and for fire and other necessities, other required services, so. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Hello? Hi, I'm Beth Perkins, and I live at 3901 California Avenue also. The, I, my concern is directly on the other side, if you put lots of lighting there, that's somebody's property. They're agricultural-type property. That's their property that you're going to be lighting up with their pool and their other things that are right there on the other side of the street. Also, I would like to recommend that you postpone approving this until you find out for sure about the sewer trunk going down, so that property owners on California Avenue- for sure about the sewer trunk going down, so that property owners on California Avenue can know if we are all going to be impacted for sure with a fee to hook up. It's, we've lived there, all of the property owners, except for the new ones with the pool, have lived there for many, many years. And all of us are getting older. And so, it would be an impact for all of us to be, to have to hook on to the sewer if we needed to. And even more, if we decided to improve our property a little bit, then we may have to, again, do the hook on to the sewer if it were improved. So, if you wouldn't mind, please postponing approval until you find out, so until everyone can find out an exact cost for us if we have to. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, I will direct her concern again, if you might please reiterate for the public what you just discussed regarding the sewer costs.
Yeah, I did just, I, you know, I scanned through the city code, and as the city code currently exists, there's no requirement to, the city cannot currently require existing homeowners to connect to the city's sewer. There are, there may arise health and safety reasons for the city to step in in certain such situations, but ordinarily, that, that is not in part of the city's existing ordinance right now. So, as far as what type of development that would require a connection fee in the future, ordinarily, it's, you know, new building permits. So, renovations of homes ordinarily wouldn't qual, you know, wouldn't constitute a basis for connection. But if you pulled permits, or subdivided, or did a more extensive development, additional units on the property, that would ordinarily trigger a connection fee.
Does that answer your question, ma'am? Very good.
There's like a $10,000 limit.
Yeah, $10,000 worth of work to that property would, would be the threshold, and then after that.
A new heating and air unit.
Do what?
Which would be a new heating and air.
I want to say that's.
Or a new roof.
$10,000. Would you like to speak to that, sir?
Yeah, I would.
Please, please come back.
Listen, I, I truly understand their concerns. And if I was a homeowner at their location, I would have the same concerns also. But it seems to me that you cannot restrict a development because of an extension of a sewer main as to whether or not the other homeowners who front on that street were going to have to connect to it or not. That, that to me should be an independent scenario and item of discussion for the city. I don't see how you can impose or not, not approve because of possible sewer connection fees. Just saying, I'm saying, I mean, if, if the developer is willing to build a sewer, he should be able to build the sewer and move on. What happens with the downstream owners, downstream being respect to the sewer, is up to the city and the property owners. So, I don't think it's fair to put the responsibility on the developer's shoulders to resolve this or to delay it because of the unknown reactions between the city and the, and the property owners regarding the sewer hookups. That's all, so.
Okay, so, allow me to make a statement. With, with regard to those monetary thresholds, regardless whether there would be a development next door to you or across the street from you, that as an individual property owner is, is what you're going to be meeting with with regard to the city and connecting to any sewer at any time. So, it would make no difference whether they were developing. If the city in the future decided to build a sewer system on Matthew or anywhere close to you, then you would be dealing with the same, same issue. So, it's an individual property owner issue regardless and separate from the development. Are, are you understanding my statement? Or shall I have somebody reiterate that for you? Do you understand that? Okay. Did you find out anything else in your research? Did you find a monetary threshold that Janet's speaking of?
The mon, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of scanning through as we speak, so it's, it's not a full comprehensive search, but I did see a $10,000 threshold that triggers requirements for curb and gutter improvements. I didn't see any, you know, connection to sewer in connection with a $10,000 threshold.
Okay.
But this would, as you mentioned.
Did you want to come up to the podium, sir? Thank you.
What was the date of that ordinance? Because $10,000 25 years ago versus $10,000 now, huge difference.
Can you, can you answer that?
That's, you know, this is, we're getting a little off, off course. This is, that's what the existing, there's a, there is a $10,000 trigger under the existing Section 150.56. If that's built into the ordinance, that's the fee. We, you know, it's, it's depending, it doesn't matter when the ordinance was adopted, unless the ordinance itself is amended, so.
And that is specific to curb and gutter you mentioned?
Yeah, this, this doesn't pertain to the sewer discussion that we're having right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, so we're going to close the public. We're going to, we're going to close the public hearing, and we're going to open up any questions for the planning commissioners now.
Is there anything?
Well, I think we've got a lot to answer in between here.
Correct. Thank you.
You know, I'm concerned about the hookups. I think we could be in unintended consequences. And since I lived in an area where they put sewer lines through, and yes, we were all required at our own expense to hook up to those sewers.
To hook up.
Yes, we were. And so, I would love to have a more definitive interpretation before we decide anything. I, I would hate to burden the existing property owners with a huge financial problem. I'm a bit uncomfortable with that.
As you were reading or stating, one's not mandated, correct?
Correct, based on my very quick reading of the code. I did not see anything, I kind of searched through all the references to connection fees and didn't see anything asserting authority of the city to require connection. But again, the, the city does have broader powers under its general police powers, and that's usually tied to when you have, you know, situations to maintain public health. And if the city had a substantial reason to require connection based on a public health concern, it would have, it's, it would be authorized under its general police powers, but that determination would have to be supported by a finding that there is a, you know, public health concern.
Certainly, would the city also have the ability to waive the requirement?
If there were such a requirement? Well, I think what he's saying right now, there isn't a requirement, but unless it was a general public safety.
Yeah, correct.
Were you thinking of, if at all, there was a fee at any point in time, could we ask the, in, in our, in our verbiage with the resolution, ask that that be modified in some way?
I don't know how I would word it, but I just, I'm really, I'm really afraid that eventually those other property owners on California are going to be required to pay at their own expense for the sewer hookups.
Well, we could ask for some consideration if, in case that ever came to light.
Yeah.
How about we do that?
I would feel comfortable with that.
If it ever came up.
If, 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 in, if, in researching the ordinances and if there any, was anything to come up with regard to some type of fee, which right now you can't find, but if there was, can we ask for consideration for the, the city council to perhaps reduce the impact on these particular neighbors that would, at some point, maybe be forced to hook up?
Just to kind of reiterate, there is, there are existing connection fees. Right now, they are based on when, you know, you have applications for, for new development or new connections that are voluntarily submitted by, by a landowner. So, as far as whether or not we can kind of guide a future discretionary action, I mean, the, the connection fees can always be waived based on specific findings, but that would be based on the, a future application brought before either the planning commissioner or the city council. So, it's, it's, it'd be hard to really build that in right now.
Perhaps maybe we could just request consideration for impact on homeowners with regard to any fees that, that they may incur for consideration. Okay. I think that would, yes. Okay, we're reopening, but, but we're going to have to keep it.
Yeah, real quick, I, I would offer and suggest to keep this moving on, approve the project, and then let it go to city council. And hopefully, by the time against the city council, the city has resolved these fee issues with regards to structure and, and requirements. But I ask you, you don't delay the project. Let's get this approved and let it go to city council. And then if we don't have a resolution by the time of city council, then, then I think it'd be an appropriate time then to dive into it more in a, in a public manner. But I just, I think it's appropriate at this point in time to approve this, and then we'll get it resolved with, with the homeowners. And I certainly agree with them. I, I certainly understand their concerns. I don't want to be flipping out, you know, paying out $10,000 either if I had to. So, anyway, that, that would be my request.
Well, thank you very much. We're going to close the, the public hearing, and we're going to give our, have our final discussion then with the commissioners. So, we can offer a request for consideration and, and for them, and go ahead, and if you so choose to vote to approve this project, and that, that will just give them a notation to, that's what we found that we, we want considered for the public.
So, the property owner couldn't be available, huh?
I, I anticipated that Mr. Montero was going to be here, but, but again, it's not, it's not his decision. This is, this is a decision or a discussion between the city engineer and city management regarding requirements for sewer hookups.
That's right. And then, and again, I, I just want to reiterate that they are two sole and separate, different issues.
Right.
And so.
You've just got a parcel, and you're required to extend a sewer, and it happens to go across lots that are on septic. I don't see how you can restrict that development because of that condition, is all. To me, it's too independent, just like you were saying, so.
I was, I was just sitting, sitting here, wondering if there was a way that, as we forward the resolution to the city council, that we note our concern.
Yes, that, that's what we discussed.
Before the, before the city council.
Yeah, that's what we discussed, is noting our concern.
Actually noting the reservation.
That it gets brought up when it goes to the city council.
Right. Yes.
At that time is when they can dig in to the detail.
That's when they can, they can move to that, okay. So, can, we have a motion on item 3.2, vesting tentative map, application number 022015.
I'd like to make a resolution to adopt the, the request of the vesting tentative map, 02-2015, for the development of the 10 single-family lots on combined 2.21 acres, located at the intersection of California Avenue and Claus Road, APN 132-046-078 and -079, with the items that we were mentioning of concern.
Chair Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenney?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And Commissioner Velpodah?
Yes.
Okay, that, that was approved for O. Okay, we'll be moving forward to number four, commission items. Item 4.1. So, our vice chair, John DeGale, resigned, and we want to thank him for his public service throughout the years, and wish him all very well in his future endeavors.
Very soon. Came from a surprise.
Certainly a surprise.
Just thought I'd mention that the, the council will honor him the last meeting of next month. John wasn't available this month, so there'll be plaque and hats on the back.
So, what is he doing? Why'd he move on? Is?
My understanding, it was family issues.
Oh, okay.
So, what is the date of that last meeting? Or will you send a notice out to us?
Yes.
So that we can make sure. Thank you, Donna, that, that would be nice.
I will notify you.
We want to be sure to be there, support him.
Yeah.
Moving to number five, county referral correspondence information, anything? Number six, upcoming meeting agenda items, Donna?
6.1, Ward Villas, which is an infill project that would require a general plan amendment, rezon, and planned development. I actually have an appointment on Thursday with Troy Wright, who's moving this project, and he will be submitting on Thursday. So, you'll see that probably in a couple of months. Diamond Bar West, item 6.2, the final subdivision map. I am meeting with those folks on Thursday as well. That actually is, 62 is the final subdivision map. That's going forward on one track. And then, item 6.3, Diamond Bar West, the architecture and site plan review of the houses is going on a separate track, because it's two different people handling these applications. So, I believe the architecture will probably get here first, because they'll have to do a lot of work on the improvements as far as the final map goes.
Where was that, Diamond Bar West? Is it the?
It's north of the, the high school on Claus.
Oh, yeah, across the street. Okay, got it, that's right.
Item 6.4, Stanislaus Cheese. That is a building near the end of the street here on Santa Fe, this way.
Oh, yeah.
I lose track. Yeah, down at the end of the street. We have routed, I think we've got all the information that we need in from the gentleman. It's been routed to staff for their comments, and we're trying to get it wrapped up and hopefully get them to you either September or October the latest.
Agreed.
And then the Cuffel parcel map, we haven't heard anything on that.
Yeah, it looks like they might just continue that one. And it looks like the property owner is, a different property owner is purchasing it and is not going to parcel that out, so.
New business?
I'm glad they're finalizing the little, what is it, apartment complex right here?
Oh, are they finishing?
It's almost, I mean, they've done a lot of work. It's been two years.
It's over here?
Yeah, down the street here, like an apartment complex.
I wonder if they follow through with their plans to retain the character of that. Were you here the night that they, they described how they were going?
Sorry. We did recently get the flyer for the next planning commission, commissioner training through, it's the 34th annual through the county. I believe it'll be Saturday, October 10th in the morning. We'll email you that information tomorrow. The council just received it today.
Do we have anything coming up for, that's the local training. Do we have any out-of-town workshop, training conferences this year?
Not, not that has come across my desk, but I'll keep my eye open for it.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So, then I'd like to adjourn the planning commission meeting, Tuesday, August 18th, 2005, and have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Do you have a way home?
Yes.